See if you guys can see this. Can everyone see that?
Nice, yes.
Everyone's good?
Yep.
Excellent, excellent.
You still have... Oh, Joni, you have the right-hand column showing.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a screen view here in a sec. I just wanna make sure everyone could see it so I could still see my little menu bar at the bottom. But yeah, let me do the, let me do screen view. And... How's that? Everyone still able to see it?
Didn't change on my end.
I'm seeing a black screen with a couple of boxes.
Okay, uh, hold on one second, pause until you return. Sharing is paused until you return to the shared window. What does that mean? How about now? Can you see it now?
No.
I cannot.
No? Dang it. Why does, I wonder what doesn't, um... Okay, hold please.
Sometimes you just unshare and reshare and that fixes it.
Really? Okay, let me try that. Let's try that. Hmm. Okay, so I'm gonna try to share again. Try this one more time. And... We're gonna go... View. And how about now?
I'm waiting, it's a black screen for me.
It says no from the puppy, it's like, no.
She said, "Oh, I don't see anything."
Oh, man.
I could see it before, but it's a black screen now.
Man, that's a bummer. Okay, well, I'm gonna try one more thing and that is I'm going to pull it up on the PowerPoint 'cause I know I've done it, given it via PowerPoint and Christine also has it on her, um... Christine also has it on her computer, so she could potentially share it, but let's see if we can bring this up on PowerPoint. That'll suck. And that takes a minute to load. All right, now we're gonna do, go back to the shared screen. I'm gonna try this. Wait, hold on one second, let me close out my PDF. Close this out, sorry, guys. Okay, try this. All righty. Okay, how does that look?
I can see it.
Like a PowerPoint.
Okay, sound yay. And then we're gonna do, enter fullscreen, and we'll see what happens. Bam. Nope, that didn't do it. View. Slideshow. How do you start this? I never can remember. Slideshow, play from start. Okay, how's that, everyone?
Looks good.
You got it.
Full screen?
I don't have it, but I can listen really well.
Oh, shoot, you don't see anything at all, John?
Um, what I see is the original screen and then there's these lines of... Lines of background of some kind.
How about now?
I can see that.
You can see that? Shoot. Well, um...
But...
Okay, well, I guess I'd rather, here, how about, I'd rather have a... Let me try it again. So you can see that, but you can't see, um... That.
No. Uh, something happens to the screen and it looks like it's digitized. Uh, strange lines going through it.
Okay, bummer. Okay.
Because I'm on a really old MacBook Pro.
Okay, no worries, no worries.
I'm 2011.
Let me open it up on the PDF again, I just think it's a little bit more, um... It's easier to share on the PDF. Sorry, guys, okay. This is the last attempt and we're getting started. We are gonna get started right now. Okay, oh, yes, I was gonna, I sent everyone a reminder today as well that, um... That, um, all of our, this meeting and work session and everything is, um... Recorded live. So, um, just know that, you're being recorded live and so don't swear or do anything else untoward. Okay. Um, and how's that? Can folks see that? I think we're just gonna go with this, if folks and I'll see that.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. All right, and if everyone's not on mute already, go ahead and mute yourself so that we don't have any feedback and then, um, but if you have a question, um, just unmute yourself and speak out. It's hard for me to pay attention to the hand raised thing while I'm giving presentations, so, um... We will just go from here, okay? All right, well, thanks, everyone, I appreciate you coming tonight. Um, your, thanks for your time. We are gonna be reviewing this non-motorized plan draft. It was approved in December at our policy committee meeting for, um, public review and comments, which is the sixth, it's gonna be a 60-day period, beginning on January 4th and extending through March 5th. We have an extra day in there, but Chris Udi wanted an extra day, so we gave him one. Um, so it's gonna be, that's the comment period. Um, this will be a great time to put in comments, that's why we're doing the review of this committee. Just to give you guys a little background on this particular draft, um, this plan has seen, uh, it's been around for more than three and a half years, we've been working on it. Uh, it's received over 400 internal agency review comments. We had, uh, three, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think we had three technical advisory, advisory committee review periods or review opportunities. We also had two separate work sessions with transportation agency people separately. Really wanted to get all the transportation agency folks on board and okay with everything we were moving forward with, just because once that's done, it's a lot easier to implement, I think, on the public's end and the city's end. So, um, that's some background. So it's been a while, and then, of course, we presented to the policy committee, I think, twice on this plan. Um, and at the last committee meeting, they approved it for, uh, public review. So, uh, just so the background, our lead consultant is, um, out of planning and design. They are national experts in the field of non-motorized planning. They are, um, really data-driven, so that was a different approach that we used this time. I guess that was different than the last time we did our bike plan, our 2007 and 2010 bike and ped plans. So, um, they were our main consultant, R&amp;M consultants, a local engineering firm, did local engineering specs for us. And then Huddle, Holly Spoth Torres with Huddle was our public involvement person. Um, I'm just gonna briefly be going through each of the chapters. There are seven chapters. Um, there's an introduction, existing conditions chapter that talks about how we, um, did all of the background research for the plan. Public involvement talks about all of our public involvement strategies and what we did. Network development is the chapter that talks about how we took that information we gathered in the existing conditions chapter and the public involvement chapter and developed a new network and network recommendations. Project prioritization, chapter five, is all about how we took those projects then that we recommended and prioritize them for high, medium, and low, which will hopefully help this committee decide, you know, what to move forward with and how we wanna spend our money. And then implementation chapter is chapter six. And then the design guide chapter is chapter seven, that's, and I'll go through those as well, so... So first of all, uh, the introduction talks about how there are three different basic networks in our non-motorized, um, uh, our non-motorized network for AMAT's area. They consist of a pedestrian network, a bicycle network, and a shared-use path network. And these three networks together, we're trying to address in one plan. The hope is that if we can address all of these in one plan, um, we can build a comprehensive plan that, um, is easier to, easier to implement and easier to move forward with. So for each of these networks, we had different goals. For the pedestrian network, we really wanted to focus on identifying priority corridors, providing flexible implementation, and improving safety connectivity. For the bike network, we wanted to focus on closing gaps, providing on-street facilities, and connecting existing and planned infrastructure. Now for the shared-use path network, we focused on connecting the existing bicycle and ped routes, developing off-street connections to low-stress routes, and then serving, or serving recreation and transportation. And just to note here, we did have some pushback going, taking the plan through originally, that it seemed really bike-heavy. And so we just wanna point out, and I will later as well, that a lot of our shared-use path network recommendations and our bicycle network, um, recommendations, uh, serve the pedestrian network as well. So we're hitting pedestrians as well, I mean, we're hitting them, we are serving them with the bike network and the shared-use path network, not just what we lay out for the pedestrian network, so just keep that in mind. So within the AMAT's area, there are these facility types within this plan that we're recommending. So they include sidewalks, enhanced shared roadways, which include yield roadways and bicycle boulevards. They include separated bikeways, which include buffered bicycle lanes and protected bicycle lanes. They also include shared-use pathways and side paths, equestrian trails, and then some supplemental bicycle facilities. Um, part of the first effort when we started the planning process was to have several, um, agency and community meetings and develop a vision statement, which we did, so let me just read it out. Uh, the vision statement for this plan reads, "Anchorage is a world-class northern city that has an integrated network of routes accessible for people of all ages and abilities to walk, roll, or glide safely on shared-use pathways and streets." And this vision statement was developed in coordination with these seven goals. And those were to increase the use of the non-motorized system, promote and improve health and the quality of life, improve safety and security, optimize maintenance, connect communities through all modes to all destinations, measure non-motorized use and assets, and finally, build a community through education and involvement. So that's a brief synopsis of what chapter one includes, although it has lots of other things in there, but, um, chapter two is getting into existing conditions, so this is what we had the consultants do at the beginning. They started by reviewing a bunch of plans that we already have adopted, including all the plans listed here on the left. Um, we also conducted a peer city review. The point of this peer city review was to, um, look at some other winter cities around the country and abroad, including Canada, we didn't look super broad, but, um, that were, were making headway in non-motorized. So these were places that were increasing their mode share for bicycles and pedestrians. And so they also, they all had a bunch of things in common, they were winter cities, they had a bunch of days below freezing during the year, they had high annual snowfall. And so it was a study of those five cities. Um, the five cities were chosen through our first public involvement event, as well as our agency and community advisory groups all weighed in and picked these five cities. So they included Madison, Wisconsin, Minneapolis, Minnesota, Salt Lake City, Utah, Calgary, and Montreal, in Quebec. And I'm not gonna read through all of these takeaways, but basically, we developed a list of, um, key takeaways that those cities are doing that we could stand to do if we wanna really improve our mode share here. So we're trying to learn from what others, some other cities are doing, so that's the point of that peer review, it was pretty interesting. Um... We also looked at existing facilities, so here's a map from the plan showing existing bicycle facilities. Um, so you can see the existing bike boulevards in yellow there, existing bicycle lanes in dark blue, uh, the paved shoulder bikeways in light blue, and the shared-use pathways, um, primary and secondary, and those are dark green and a little bit lighter green. Uh, we also looked at Vision Zero crash data. That was our main source of, um, looking at safety for this plan and how that was gonna weigh in later for our prioritization, which I'll talk about later. But, uh, so Vision Zero was a key component. We also did a level of traffic stress analysis on the current system. This analysis looks at four main things, it looks at posted speed limit, street width, if there's bicycle lanes there, and what the character of those bicycle lanes are. And then depending on those four factors, uh, any facility is given a score of level of stress, one being low, two, level of stress four, which is high. And so, um, the reds, you can see the red areas on the map are the higher-stress routes. And that was also used in our prioritization later on, um, which I'll talk about. We also did a demand analysis. Um, basically, the demand analysis looked at where people were working, playing, shopping, going to school, accessing parks. And so you can see in the darker areas in this map, um, the darker oranges are the areas where we have higher demand, we have a lot more people trying to access different areas around town, um, or maybe they use it as a route to get somewhere. So that's a, um, that's also a factor that was used in our prioritization. And in addition to that, we looked at health and equity, I believe, um, all of the health and equity data that we looked at came from, um, the Centers of Disease, or shoot, I didn't write this down, it's not on the top of my head, but, um, it came from data from Centers of, uh, Disease and Health Prevention? No, Carol, you know this one. Um... I'll get it to you guys later, I apologize, I should know exactly where this data came from, but, did you wanna say something?
Oh, I was saying CDC, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, but we also at the State Health Department collected this on behalf of, um, CDC, so it, you could've gotten it from us, but in conjunction with CDC, when we worked with them.
Okay, excellent, thank you so much, I apologize. Um, and that actual, uh, reference for where the, oh, it's probably just turned in my plan. The reference for where the data was collected is actually in the plan, um... So you can read it right in the plan, it's on page 35, if you wanna look at all the info about where the data was collected, but, thank you, Carol. Um, so we looked at health and equity, these are the health indicators that were looked at, um, obesity, heart disease, physical activity, cancer prevalence, asthma prevalence, diabetes prevalence, and then mental health, poor mental health prevalence. Uh, we also looked at, you know, look back to that slide in a sec, but we also looked at equity. Um, the equity indicators were age, income, limited English proficiency, non-white populations, education level, and vehicle access. And in these maps, you can see the concentrations of, um, the higher concentrations and lower concentrations of where those equity indicators are showing up, mostly in, um, in the AMAT's area. And I will say, we do have a map, somebody asked me about this the other day, but we have a map in the plan of these equity indicators and where they are. We do not have, oops, sorry, we do not have a map of the health indicators, but that's because, um, when we looked at health, they actually were showing up in the exact same places that the equity indicators were showing up. So this equity map can kinda show as a map to for health as well, or I guess both of them would be showing up in the same areas, so, um... Okay, so that's chapter two, so that wraps up our existing conditions studies. Chapter three gets into our public involvement and what we did. So the very beginning, we kicked, we had a big kickoff workshop, it was in, I believe, December, it was very cold, I think we did a, did a ride from the university there. Um, we did a bunch of presentations, we did mobile meetings, stakeholder interviews throughout the process, we did field data collection, if you guys remember the app that was, that was, uh, set up at the very beginning. There were walk audits, we held walk audits, and we did an online community survey. So here's some photos from a bunch of those events. Here is a timeline of, um, kind of what our process has been, starting in 2017, it kinda definitely needs to be updated, but it goes through June of 2018, um, after which time we kind of, the consultants went in, went dark and started just working on the actual document and getting that ready, so... Um, but again, up here on the right, you can see we had the web map up. This was for folks to log on to and report areas of concern or improvements that they thought were needed to happen. We identified over 200 spot and quarter locations, um, that were identified for improvement. And the topics that people, uh, either through the app or through the online web map reported on were personal safety, missing connections, facility safety, connectivity and access. And that data was also taken into, um, account and was used in the prioritization of projects that we'll see in, uh, chapter four. In addition to those things, we had two advisory committees, we had a citizen advisory group and an agency advisory group. Um, these two committees oversaw our plan goals and objectives. Uh, the peer cities, like I mentioned before, are mapping out of what our public engagement strategy was gonna be. When we had, when we were into, uh, getting into chapter four, network recommendations, they also weighed in on these, um, some design guidance and some project prioritization. So here's a photo from one of those advisory group meetings. And then in addition to that, we had some mobile meetings, these were largely run by Holly and her group there over at Huddle, but she met with these folks on the left. Um, I'm just gonna read through some of these key takeaways, but we found that they really wanted to have some more non-motorized infrastructure. They wanted to improve maintenance of existing infrastructure, increase safety, um, prioritization of snow removal, that's a big one, uh, better connectivity to transit, and then increase connectivity of the whole, uh, the whole system. And then finally, in addition to that, we actually did a winter maintenance forum, this was done at the very beginning, not at the end, but, um, that was held in September 2017. And, uh, it was really good, it was, we had a great turnout, we had presentations from, uh, municipal maintenance and operations, DOT maintenance and operations, and parks, um, that all presented on some of the challenges that they're facing and what they're trying to do to fix and to improve maintenance in the area. So it was really helpful, I mean, obviously it was a number of years ago, so what we'd like to do, I think, is hold another winter maintenance forum, and I think I mentioned that at the last B-PAC meeting, but, um, so that's kind of on our list of to-do to wrap up this plan, I think it'll be really valuable. So I guess this into chapter four, um... Which is about how we took all the information we learned in chapters one, two, and three, and, uh, put it all together to come up with a proposed, uh, network. So again, just to reiterate, some of the goals we had for the bike network were to include on-street and off-street facilities, build on existing shared-use pathways and side path networks, provide connected, low-stress travel, and provide upgrades to existing facilities. So you can see here on this map, these are proposed bike facilities. So we've got enhanced shared roadways in purple, separated bikeways in orange, shared-use pathways in green, and then existing facilities are the, the gray. So that's for bike, bike, the bike network. Um, and I'll just, because I think we're introducing some new facility types here, I'm just gonna go through them quickly so that we have an idea of what they're actually, what they actually mean. So enhanced shared roadways are, uh, include yield roadways and bicycle boulevards. So a yield roadway is more like, um, a two-gatch way, doesn't really have, um, markings, but it serves both pedestrians and bicyclists. Um, it's the way it's built is more, a little, to be more comfortable so that bikes and pedestrians and cars sort of feel comfortable on the same roadway. I don't know if that's totally true for two-gatch way, but I like to throw it out as an example. Lindsay, you can correct me if I'm, I'm way off there, but, um... And then bicycle boulevards, we have a few of those in town here already. This one is from 10th Avenue. Um, these are, uh, basically put on non-arterial streets that already have low traffic volumes. There is usually signage that tells people they're on a bicycle boulevard. It has a maximum speed of 25 miles per hour and it usually has a, um, you know, road, road bicycle striking that you can see, like this one. Uh, separated bikeways, there's two types, there's buffered bicycle lanes, so we have a great one now on Pine McCary, um, or Peterkin, and, um... And that is a conventional bicycle lane, but it has an additional, uh, buffer white painted space that's at least 18 inches wide. So, and when we biked that with the B-PAC, um, in the fall, I felt very comfortable on it, um, so I, I think it's a great option for us moving forward. Um, and there's also protected bicycle lanes, which you see on the right. This is like a bike lane, um, but they're separated by a physical, by a painted buffer and some type of physical barrier. This particular one is a raised, so this one's actually on asphalt that's raised, um, above the road, the road level, but, um, they can be separated by flexible delineators, curbs, or planters even, and that constitutes a protected bike lane. And then finally, uh, to wrap up the bicycle network facility types, we've got shared-use pathways or side paths. Um, the shared-use pathway, so a great example is the Toninell's Coastal Trail, the Chester Creek Trail. It's an off-street dedicated facility for two-way non-motorized users, um, can have bicycle pedestrians, skaters, wheelchairs, joggers, skiers, et cetera. Um, and then the side path is like a shared-use pathway, but it is directly adjacent to or parallel to a roadway. And they're also for two-way movement and for all non-motorized users. And then for the pedestrian network, so, and I, I think I explained this to the group already, but, um, what we did here in this plan is to identify corridors, rather than, um, giving actual project recommendations, we thought it would be more helpful to identify corridors, and we did this for a couple of reasons. One is our GIS data was really out of date, so we had a really hard time delineating between sidewalks, um, uh, sidewalks and, um, those, sorry, sidewalks and, uh, side paths, like you can see here. So our GIS, current municipal GIS data is really out of date, so that was gonna be a big haul to try and fix all that. Um, also, when we're implementing the bike or the pedestrian plan, the last, uh, 10 years or so, the pedestrian projects are so expensive, um, that it doesn't make a whole lot of sense and it takes so long to fund, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us to suggest a type of project to put down. It made more sense to just locate, here are the priority corridors that we need to focus on, um, to really improve things, and then give, that gives a lot of flexibility to designers so that they can say, okay, we're gonna focus on these corridors and here's what we've got going, we can apply. It's on a state road, we could do state money, if it's on a local road, we could, you know, use a number of funding choices there. So it's an approach that we used, um... And I think it's a good approach. Um, we also included in the plan document, there is, uh, we included all of the pedestrian projects, the prioritized projects from the old plan, so the 2007 plan. So in the document, in addition to these priority corridors we've identified, we also have all the old projects that were identified, some of those have been done, some haven't, but it'll just help, um, us, I'm getting the weeds here, sorry, they'll just help us figure out, okay, here's a priority corridor, now what kind of project could we maybe recommend there? Let's look at what was recommended in 2007 and see if there's anything new or, uh, different that we could recommend, so that, those were our, that's our line of thinking there. Anyways, sorry, got off on tangent. Okay, so pedestrian network goals were identifying primary and secondary corridors, including the Vision Zero High Injury Network, which we did, identifying the idea, areas of high demand and high need, and then also looking at proximity to transit stop locations. So in this map, you can see the dark blue are the primary corridors that were identified. Um, the light blue are the secondary corridors that were identified. And then we've got the existing shared-use pathways and sidewalks in gray. Sorry, I didn't put everyone to sleep just there. Um, we're, we're get, we're, we're getting through this, you guys are doing great. Does anyone need a break? You guys doing okay? It's a long presentation.
No, it's great, I'm enjoying it.
Okay, good, 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 I'm sorry, I feel like it's long, so I know people get worn out after a while, but thanks for being a receptive audience, okay, I'll keep going. thanks for being a receptive audience. Okay, I'll keep going. So, Chapter Four, that was Chapter Four, and now we're gonna get into Chapter Five, which is prioritization. So this is where we took all that info and data, a lot of data that was gathered in those previous efforts that I talked about, and used it to prioritize those corridors that we just looked at, primary and secondary corridors for pedestrians, and then the bicycle facilities that were on the map prior to that. So how we did that is we came up with six criteria. And each of these criteria connects back to data that was already, that was already compiled during this effort. So I tried to put this graphic in a way that shows how it was weighted. So the six criteria are in these bubbles. Connectivity was the most heavily weighted criteria. Next to that, health and equity, gap, closing existing gaps in our network, and then safety, were all weighted about equally, the same. And then we have public support and then previous support. Public support was, did the project or area show support in this planning process? Did someone call it out as an area that needed improvement? Or focus on in some other way? And then previous support is, does it show up in a previous planning effort? And is it in an existing plan already? So those are six criteria, and I'm, I'm not a data person. I get a little confused when I try to talk about this, but just to give you an example of how that was used, we'll look at the first, if you look at the first row there, that's connectivity here. So this, the criteria was connectivity. So for each of those, so let's take, I don't know, a project on, let's look at like Northern Lights Boulevard or something like that. And we're trying to score it, and we're trying to figure out if it should be high, medium, or low. So if you look at the first criteria, connectivity, there's a description of what, what it was. Does this project provide improved connectivity within high-demand areas and/or to parks and schools? And it's long, I'm not gonna read it all. But so that's the description of what it is. Here is the source where the calculations came from. So for this particular criteria, they looked at the demand analysis, they looked at proximity to schools, and they looked at proximity to parks, okay? And so then they looked at, so if the project or the area, the road or facility was located with, within a quarter mile of a high-demand area, which is the condition, then it got a score of five, which is a high priority. It was located within a half mile of the high-demand area, it got a score of three, which is medium. And if it's not located in a high-demand area at all, it gets a score of one. So for each of these sources, in this criteria, the facility or road or corridor was given a score of high, medium, or low. And I know it is a little confusing. If you want it, there's more, it goes into way more detail in Chapter Five. You can read all about how everything's calculated. But basically, this was done for each criteria, connectivity, health and equity, this one, gap closure, and then those other ones on the previous page there. So it was done for each of these criteria, and then that's how scores were tabulated. Okay, so after that was done, so here's the bicycle network. So basically, we looked at all of those recommended bike facilities. All of those were run through that scoring process. And what we have here in this map is a photo that, or a map that shows the bike facilities, but now they're prioritized. So for the red, those are the high-priority facilities. So we, someone's waiting in the lobby, hold on, sorry. Who's waiting in the lobby?
It's me, Julia. Sorry about that.
Oh, you're, okay, but you're in now? Okay, good, sorry. Okay, so anyways, so for the bike projects, all of the red are our projects that scored high. So those are all high-priority projects based on that analysis that I just went through. And then the yellow is the medium priority, and then low is the blue. So now you can see, for each of these, there is an associated facility type that was recommended, and then it's also prioritized. So hopefully, this process will make it easier for an entity like this committee to make recommendations when it comes tip time. And we gotta make project recommendations about what we'd like to see happen and how best to spend our money. So hopefully, this will help. And then, okay, and then same process was used for the pedestrian corridors. So for those primary and secondary corridors we identified, here are the high, medium, and low priority designations that were calculated. So that's, basically, that's Chapter Five, so it's all about prioritization. And as I said before, you can read a lot more about how that was all tabulated and done, but that just gives you an idea of what we did. Okay, moving to Chapter Six. So this chapter is our implementation chapter. As planner, I like to think that this chapter, the implementation chapter, is probably the most important chapter of any plan because it gives a step-by-step process, or it should give a step-by-step process to a community about how to implement an actual plan, so it just doesn't end up sitting on a shelf forever. But one of the main things we wanna do in this implementation chapter is to come up with some project examples. One of the things we ran into before when we were trying to implement was there are all these projects, and we had money associated or estimates associated with each project. And every time we tried to move forward with something, we'd get all this pushback from agencies telling us, hey, you know, you way underestimated the cost of this. You don't really know what's involved, like, you don't really know a lot about the project, and so, you know, we can't do this. Or you can do it, but it's gonna be like fifteen times as expensive or something. So what we wanted to do in this plan is give folks, especially the non-transportation professional folks, a good idea of what's involved in any, in, in, well, not any, but in most types of projects. So we had R and M draw up, they did a great job for us. We had them draw up this, basically, this chapter, which looks at six different types of projects. We've got an intersection project, Tenth Avenue Cordova. We've got a trail crossing project, a, basically, a complete street renovation project, which is Fireweed Lane. We have a bicycle boulevard project, Twenty-Seventh Avenue. We've got sidewalk involved project, and then as, creating a separated multi-use pathway. And for each of these projects, the consultants provided us with a project description and a locator map, project challenges, a conceptual design, which you'll see in a sec, estimates of construction and maintenance, based on twenty, I believe it's twenty eighteen dollars, some different funding options, and then a perspective timeline on how long that project would take to get completed. So I think this will be really helpful. For example, here is the Tenth Avenue and Cordova Street Intersection Project. So you can see the nice graphic design that was drawn up for this type of project. They list the project challenges. They list maintenance cost estimates down there in the little table. There's also project cost estimates, yeah, and twenty eighteen dollars, like I said, different funding options, and then, you know, what the implementation pro, process could look like. The project cost options to this table on the left, it includes a bunch of key things for us, so cost of engineering, cost of construction, utility relocation, right-of-way acquisition, and contingency. So that's super helpful, especially for people like me. I'm not an engineer. I have really no idea how much things cost, and I think a lot of people don't either. So this helps to give us an idea of how much things are gonna be. In addition to those project examples, we also have policy recommendations. And then we also have priority action recommendations. I'm not gonna read through all these, but those are included in this chapter. In addition to that, we have different program recommendations. These are recommendations that will help us increase our outreach and education for all non-motorized facilities. And then finally, we have an implementation matrix, which I think is one of the most helpful things to give you an idea, or give the community an idea of what to focus on first in the first zero to two years, what to focus on in two to ten years, and then for the long term, ten to twenty. And this matrix includes the implementation action. It also includes a related policy goal that is within the plan, so where, what goal or policy that's coming from, potential funding sources associated with that action, and then who potential implementation partners could be. So I always love the implementation section. I think you guys will appreciate this one, too. And then finally, that wraps up Chapter Six. And then finally, we're gonna zip through this chapter. This is the design guide chapter. We, one of the better things about working with experts in non-motorized design, such as Alta, was they have all these great graphics and design recommendations. And they, I don't know if Alta, yeah, maybe it was Alta that put out the first NACTO Design Guide. I knew it was folks from Alta. If it wasn't Alta, it was folks from Alta. So they're sort of the leading experts on design. So a design chapter showing all of the neat things that they're doing was helpful. So anyway, to start, we looked at guidance that's already out there, national, state, and local, to give a list for folks to see. We also identified user needs for pedestrians, bicyclists, wheelchair users, and other non-motorized users. I should say the design chapter goes over all this. It also looks at facility types for pedestrians, bicycles, enhanced shared roadways, separated bikeways, all the facility types we already talked about. And I personally really like this little table here, which is the bicycle facility selection tool. And so gives a really good idea of, you know, it's got posted speed on the bottom, which is on the x-axis, and average daily traffic on the y-axis. And so based on those two factors, you can sort of see, if you're not making major changes to the road, what type of facility that you should be recommending, given those two criteria. So you can see the shared roadways, the low-speed, low-average daily traffic, and all the way up to multi-use paths at the speed of fifty or higher, or separated paths. So I think that tables, I like that table. I just, okay. And then it also goes over intersection designs, different intersection designs. So here we have some photos of some at-grade intersection treatments we could do, some different crossing types that folks are using successfully in other places, some different grades, separated intersection treatments, and then some different signalization options. In addition, this chapter also includes all kinds of innovative bike parking for short, short-term, long-term. And then, of course, bicycle repair, we already have some really great stations, thanks to CRW. And then also goes over signage and wayfinding for both pedestrians and bicyclists, which we already have some great signage and wayfinding, thanks to the Anchorage Parks Foundation and all the work they've put into our trail signs. And then finally, it goes over maintenance, maintenance, it has a maintenance matrix and a winter maintenance section. And I will say, and I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus, but I will say that we did contact our municipal maintenance several times throughout the planning process. We did hear back from them, I think, once early on, but they actually still haven't weighed in on the, the public draft document. And I'm hoping to get some comments from them through this public involvement period. But DOT maintenance got back to us and they made comments, so that was great. But our municipal maintenance department, I don't know whether or not they're just slammed or what. I, I know they have great input, and we love to hear from them, but yeah, we didn't, we didn't hear back, so unfortunately. But we did try, we did try a lot. Let's see, and then finally, we have appendices that include, well, when we were taking this plan through the first time, we got a lot of pushback from traffic, saying that they, they didn't want us to put things in the plan that weren't yet approved or techniques or facility, things that weren't approved. So we listed out the things that are in the plan but not approved yet, just so that folks would know. That's in the appendices. And then we also have meeting minutes from our different meetings, and then our glossary, acronym glossary. And I think that is it. Good job, everyone. I think that was a good forty minutes or more. So thank you for your attention. Does anyone have any questions and/or like to open it up for talking about how you wanna move forward to submit comments? And I'll, I'll just keep sharing my screen, in case anyone wants to look at a different slide.
Well, thanks, Joni. It was totally informative, and it'll help me go through the, to rather long document more quickly this way. So do you think the best approach for us would be to concentrate on one chapter, like the implementation chapter? Or is there some place where the B-PAC and advocates would be best to spend their time?
Well, I, I would love to hear, I know it is a, it's a long plan. I would love to hear what you all think of the whole, of the plan as kind of a whole, you know? But I think, I mean, for, yeah, the implementation, of course, is, is very important because you're gonna be using that when tip time comes around to make recommendations, of course. I also think maybe looking at the prioritization chapter would also be really beneficial, just to make sure that, you know, we think we, we hit all of the, the main things that we needed to hit there. I don't think we left anything major out. But yeah, I think those two, so the implementation and prioritization chapters are probably, if you, if you, if you wanna only maybe look at a couple of chapters, those would probably be the most helpful. But, and then the other thing I would love to hear this, from this committee is, you know, like I mentioned about the pedestrian corridors, that we don't have actual project recommendation, new project recommendations. We have the ones from the old plan. I'd love to hear what folks think about that approach, if they think that's gonna be helpful in the long run to give some more design flexibility and allow, you know, maybe more, more leeway when we're trying to recommend, recommend ped projects, or just what your thoughts are. Yep.
I mean, this is Carol again. I thought that was a fairly brilliant idea because a lot of that work can be done when other parts of the roadway are getting fixed or when people come in to do utilities. Having it be a priority corridor is a nice way to, to get the project done, possibly without spending specific pedestrian dollars. They're just gonna be redoing the road for another reason and having it identified. Sounds like a really great strategy to me.
Okay, good, great. No, yeah, well, those are, and that's great. I love those types of comments, cuz I, I definitely want, I don't want people to think that we just focus on bicycles and stuff. That definitely wasn't what we were trying to do, so that'd be great. Yeah, any comments like that, great.
Joni, this is Daryl.
Yeah.
Thanks for the presentation. It was wonderful. It was a great overview. I've been looking through the document, and I think you and Carol are, are right on. We need to look at prioritization and implementation. We need to focus on those because I think this document is incredible. The, the existing conditions, when it talks about equity and health equity, and there's a lot of valuable data in there actually that I am gonna use in our municipalities' equity cabinet meetings. I want a cabinet to look at a lot of this data. So, so the team did a really good job of laying the groundwork, and our focus would be best, our, our, our best return would be looking at prioritization and implementation, I believe.
Great, okay, yeah, excellent. Does anyone else wanna comment or what do you, how, how many, how much time do you think you all, um, a week, you know, the comment period goes through March sixth. So we are gonna have a, a open house in February, uh, probably late February. Um, so if you all wanna, you know, take some time to look at the draft and read over it and then convene again another work session to talk about specific comments, um, we can set that up. I'm happy to set up a meeting once the committee decides when they want to meet next to look at this or talk about it.
Hey, Joni, this is Lindsay and, um, I, I think I, for me, I would like to have some more time to try to digest this plan, um, getting it. I've just realized we worked on it like two or three years ago and so just trying to get back up to speed on all of these different components.
Yeah.
There's a little bit of a learning curve, a relearning curve. Um, and then there, there have been, you know, some more plans and processes since then. So looking at it from a few, with a few different lenses and one of them being, uh, with the, the Spinnard community lens and just trying to see how this, uh, document can align with the Spinnard corridor plan, which, you know, is intended to look at land use and transportation. And so just seeing some missing links on different projects. Um, and I, I'm just not even sure if I'm looking in the wrong places or I'm just finding it hard to identify, uh, different pieces on the maps. And so just take some time to go through all the different tables and things like that. Um, and so if we could just have some more time as, uh, the B-PAC and maybe convene in, uh, the next month, bef, it might be nice to do after you have an open house of some sort because I'm sure we'll participate in that as well. But we'll probably need to get our comments together pretty soon so we could do the editing and all that.
That sounds great. And actually, I'm so glad you said that too, Lindsay, because I do have to be, um, honest and I am kicking myself because, um, I can't believe it, we did it. But, um, I was notified by Andrew Friday of last week that we left off, and I have to say, okay, I don't want to throw people under the bus, but like, I love, you know, outside consultants are great. They have a lot of knowledge, um, about data and these new ways to do things, but they don't know the area as well. So that leaves it on me to like double make sure that every important project is included. And I didn't fell through on the job there because we noticed on Friday, and I swear to God, I told them to put it in. I don't know how it got missed, but, um, the Spinnard section of, and it's probably because it wasn't approved at the time when they started the document, but the Spinnard section from Benson, no.
Yeah, Benson to Minnesota.
It's missing and, um, Andrew pointed out, because they're working on that project and you're like, uh,
Correct.
Are we still good? Like, is that, can we work on this? And I was like, oh my God, total forehead.
It was like the first project I couldn't, you know, control find and I was like, it's not in the plan.
I know. I'm so, so, so there are, you know, there's, I apologize. Like, that was a really embarrassing one, but, um, I think the thirty-second, thirty-third is also not on there and I remember asking that one to be included. But, um, for whatever reason, it got left off and we definitely are gonna put it in there. So, but I would love it too if this community, being such bike advocates, um, and bicyclist, if you see a major thing that was missed or a link that, you know, is just obvious to you that we'd missed, this is a great, we love to know about it and we will, you know, this is the time we can put it in there. You know, we've done our, our best, I guess, but, you know, we definitely missed some things, I'm sure. So that's a set of, uh, second eyes, third eyes, fourth eyes is gonna be great.
And Joni, I have another question about the trail plan. It's, you know, the nineteen ninety-seven trail plan I'm not very familiar with. And so there's a comment at the beginning of this document that said that different trails, projects may be identified for future study. Um, and so I'm just trying to understand how to look at this document. If the current trails are the shared use pathways that are mapped out on the bicycle network, is that what's the standard for the trail plan for the city?
Um, yes, so all of the, yeah, so any trails that are identified are part of those shared pa, shared use pathway network. Um, and I, sorry, I forgot to mention that as well. So initially, when we started this planning effort, this to the group, uh, um, we wanted to have this new plan replace the bike plan, the PED plan, and the trails plan. And we quickly realized, um, that we did not have the funding or resources to do a comprehensive trails plan update with this planning effort. So what we're, we're hoping to do is what we've got in this plan are just, you know, major trail connections that serve the community. Those are included. But we are gonna be doing a more robust trails, actual trails plan element that's gonna be amended, that this document's gonna be amended with. Um, and we're gonna hopefully do that in the next couple of years. So it just, it's gonna take a lot more funding and a lot more, um, well, we were just, there's actually a lot of issues with, with trails, um, because there's so much private property too that's involved, um, when you're looking at especially trails on the hillside and trails in other areas. So, uh, we are gonna be following this up with a co, more robust comprehensive trails effort. But yes, for now, Lindsay, those shared use pathways, um, are, I know they're, you know, they're our main trail connections, but they, they're paved. But, um, for right now, those are, are, they're all, they're all that we're including for trails. I know that's kinda lame, but it's kinda where we're at right now.
God, thanks.
Yeah.
Joni, this is Daryl. I, I like Lindsay's idea of convening after the open house. Um, I, I think, you know, a lot of us are gonna participate in the open house and members of the public may spot something that we don't or they may have some comments that may influence our recommendations. So it, I think it would be beneficial for us to meet again after the open house.
Okay, um, I'm gonna look at my calendar real quick. So, if we did an open house in, um, I don't know, mid-February, like maybe we did it on, um, Thursday, the February eleventh or something, that would give you one, two, that would give you three weeks to put together some comments after that open house. Would that be amenable to folks? I think that's enough time.
I think it would work. What does everybody else think?
Yeah, that sounds good to me. I, I'm plan, this is Carol. I'm planning on participating in the open houses and if there's community, are you going community, the bike community council or any of that as well?
Um, well, we're gonna do a virtual open house. So I guess we'll just, we're gonna invite everyone.
Okay.
I think it'll be like a one-day, one-day open house, but then we'll have, um, we'll have the boards and the comment period still open so people can continue to submit comments for the remainder of our comment period.
So Joni, have, have, have you forwarded the links to the Federation of Community Councils and asked that they distribute information regarding the public comment period in the plan to the community councils?
I think we have. Christine, do you know if we've, and if we haven't, we definitely will. Have we done that yet, Christine? Do you know? Christine should be on. Shoot, she may have stepped out for a minute.
I'm sure. I don't think I've received it yet through the FCC.
Okay, she hasn't received it yet. Okay, sorry, she must have stepped out for a minute. I will, um, I thought we had done that, but I will, I will, um, ask her and we'll definitely get that out tomorrow morning. Um, so FCC and then all the community council, well, uh, I guess we don't have to make special community council contacts if they're sending it up to FCC, so. Um, is there anywhere else you think we should send it to? I mean, I know, I did Bike Anchorage. Do you know if Bike Anchorage posted the link? Um.
Well, I sent a message about needing to update the website.
Yeah.
So there's not really a good place to send people to, other than the B-PAC page, I guess.
Okay, I was, yeah, the AMATS, well, on our AMATS website, I think that would be the main place. But good point, Lindsay. And I will, um, when our website gets updated, which I sent a note to the consultants this morning, right after the email. So Kim's let me know that they're working on that right away and they should get that done. So when that is done, um, I'll let you know. And then if you wanna send people the, the project website, we can do that. Um, okay, and if anyone has any other suggestions of where we should send it, um, I will ask Christine. She's our new public involvement coordinator. So I will ask her where she has sent it, where she plans to send it and I'll, and I'll send an email out to the people you guys are on. She's on that list.
Joni, this is Daryl. I, I'll send you an email in the next day or so with some suggestions. You, you, they may already be on your list, but I was thinking of Equal Rights Commission because they have a distribution list of community partners that they could probably forward it to. I was thinking of the NAACP. I'm a member, uh, I was gonna forward it to them anyways, but I'll, I'll send you a list of, uh, community organizations that it might be beneficial to send it to. And I'm sure a lot of them are already on your list, but just in case.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks, Daryl. Appreciate it. Um, well, are there any more questions? How are we all feeling?
Hi, Joni. Can I just, this is Julius Edelson, bike PED coordinator. Uh, I wondered, have you had any contact with the Civil Rights Office and ADA, um, the ADA coordinator with DOT?
With DOT? I have not. Um, is there, who is it?
Uh, I can forward you, uh, his contact information. I, I, his name is, he's a new coordinator. His name is Robus Pierre or something like that.
Oh.
Uh, but I can forward that information to you. It might be valuable to, to get their input on the plan as well and comments on the plan.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great. Okay, thanks, Julius. Any other comments from the group? I know we're at our, over our meeting time. Um, I'm just gonna stop sharing my screen here. Let's see. Let's see, are people still on? Everyone's here. I can see you guys.
Right, thanks, Joni. That was a good presentation and overview and, um, I like this approach.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you, you guys taking the time to review and thank you for your good input. Look forward to your comments. All right, have a good one. Have a good night. Stay safe.
Thanks, Joni. Good night, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Nice to see you all virtually.
Yeah, good to see you all. Bye.